To remind everyone, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live and is also being recorded for use at another time if needed. So keep that in mind. And ask everyone to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Please also join me in a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
(Inaudible).
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As I said before, we've got a very limited agenda this evening, and I am going to take field trips out of order. If you look, the first field trip, it had a date change because of the last snow. It was the Decker field trip that we already approved, and when we get to the next one, we'll go further. But it's a, it's a date change to the first of February to the second. Same destination, Quincy Mary, a Decker district conference, approximately three adults that are going to be chaperoning, but it's to, to be determined. They will not be requested for a nurse because they are providing it at this, an entertaining motion to accept.
So move second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Okay. Because of the first one, they're canceled because of snow, it's allowing them to go to a new one on January 10th and 11th. That's why we have to have this on the agenda for tonight. So they're going to two. This one's at January 10th to the 11th, Seacrest Hotel in Falmouth, the Decker District 8 Conference. They have two chaperones. They are asking for a waiver of the school nurse because personnel is on site. An entertaining motion to accept.
So move second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay. Full business superintendent search. We have received nineteen applications. The superintendent search. There are some in-house. So the committee, as, as everyone knows, the last meeting, we discussed how we were going to do this. One of the ways, and I'm just going over it, I'm not suggesting this, I'm giving you your options. The committee can do all of the screening and pick the last candidates. If the committee does it only, it has to be done completely in open session. None of it can be done in closed session. Any questions? That would mean screening all of the applicants, interviewing whatever you determined was a number that you'd like to interview and moving forward that way, but all of it has to be done 100% in open session. So it would reveal every single person, which I don't believe that's a bad thing. The second way of doing it, another way of doing it, is to pick three to five school committee members, and then in panel, five or six, somewhere in that vicinity of people from the district. That makeup could look something like the members, some of the members, because you have to stay, this committee is a committee of ten, so you have to stay under a quorum. So it's got to be five or less to be on that committee. Then you might think of having someone from, like Kevin Kafka's in charge of the union negotiating. He's the president of the union. You might want to have him. You also possibly would want to have a school administrator, i.e. a principal. You might think of having someone who has something to do with special education. Then you possibly would think, and again, these are just suggestions, this is out to kick around. The, the members at large might be people that are already involved with the schools, such as presidents of PTOs. Maybe one from Whitman and one from Hanson. You might also think about someone from the Hanson Education Association. And you might also think about a parent from each town. If you did that, you're talking approximately 12 to 13 people. If you took everyone that I just talked about on the committee, on the screening committee. Now the screening committee's job, obviously, one of the things that any screening committee does, as all school committees know, is you have to be completely confidential with what goes on because there are nineteen people that are applying for these positions, and a lot of these people have positions in other places. So whatever happens here stays here. Also, a screening committee is allowed to go into executive session to discuss things. Now there are things you cannot do in executive session, which we can go into at a later date, but first we have to figure out how we're going to do it. Whether we're going to do it as a school committee, whether we're going to appoint a screening committee, and with nineteen applications, you might possibly want to whittle it down to six, and then let the school committee, because ultimately, whatever the screening committee does, if that's the route that this committee decides to take, the school committee is ultimately the end vote on the applicants. They're going to interview, whether it be three, five, or six, whatever we determine tonight, and that's going to be the vote. So the charge to the screening committee, so no one, you know, so everyone understands what's going on, because certainly, this is going to take, this is not going to be a few hours. I envision this, like the timetable I'm thinking about would be start next Monday night, figure on that meeting, three to four hours. Go the next Monday night, figure on that meeting, three to four hours. Go the next Monday night, figure on that meeting, three to four hours. Because if you, if the screening committee starts an interview process, interviewing candidates, it, you can't interview a candidate for three minutes. You know, you're going to have to set up a timeline. You're going to have to discuss questions. Who's going to be answering? The recommendation would obviously be the same person, ask the same question to every single candidate, so you can judge it from that. It's not going to jump all around. It's to keep some sort of meeting sanity, and the, the questions obviously have to be the same to each candidate. You can't tailor special questions to special candidates. So the committee, however it ends up being done, is ultimately going to have to make up questions, whether we take questions from people in the town that might want to submit them and go over them. Took the liberty, it's, of looking on a website and the sample interview questions from several different groups that, that you can go over and see what you want for questions. But those interviews, if you have 12 people and you decide to ask 12 questions, is going to be lengthy. But that's something the screening committee is going to do. So, having said that, is there any questions about the makeups? Because we have to determine what we're going to do.
I would like to see, like, similar to what you were saying, like, one WHGA, like, like you said, maybe Kevin. Two parents, one from each town, that has some type of educational background. And maybe like two principals or principal slash something within the district. I wouldn't want to go too, too many, along with the five. That gives you about 10.
Yeah.
Something like that.
And, and that's kind of what I had, Dan, I had Kevin Kafka because it's WHGA. I had one administrator, and I put down for an example, a principal. I had a special ed person, because special ed comes into the equation through the administration of how it's going to move forward. The PTO presidents I just put down because they're already involved with the PTOs, and those are parents that obviously have shown interest in doing this. And somebody from the High School Education Foundation, who was another arm of a fundraiser for this district. So that was kind of where I came up with, with what I put. So we're on the same page. Anyone else?
What, what constitutes a quorum? So is it five?
Six.
Six. So it's a majority, it's not greater, so it's six.
So ultimately, if, say you decided to take five school committee members, it would be two from Whitman, two from Hanson, and myself. So you're going, you're getting four school committee members, two from Whitman, and two from Hanson, and you're getting me. That would be, how that would start. As a screening committee, if you have 10 or 11, and I, I agree with you, Dan, less is better, but it just, you know, it's part of the process. Yeah, Fred?
The one thought process that I have is A, to open it up, you know, too far. You don't want to. B, should every member of this committee be afforded to be on the screening committee? And what happens if we have more than five?
You have a quorum.
Exactly. So what I'm saying is, if we have more members that want to be part of the process right from the beginning, and don't want to be left out.
You nominate.
Well, that's, that's why I'm throwing you both options. You know, I mean, it is what it is. If you go over five, you're going to end up with over quorum, you're going to end up with the whole committee.
Question on that. Correct me if I'm wrong, where I would think some people probably don't want their employees knowing about it. That puts them in a bad light because...
You have to let them know.
Right. I just, I, I mean, personally, I don't, I understand what you're saying, and I agree, but I also don't have a problem with the five from school committee. Kevin, if Kevin's willing to do it. I know who I'm going to throw into the bus for building principals. We're nominating people. You know, somebody from SPAD, and then whether it's PTO parents or whatever, I'm okay with all that. Whatever the committee wants to do. But, yeah, I think at that point, you may lose and can't, I don't know if we might lose candidates if all of a sudden everything's open.
Well, if everything's in the open, we're going to have to notify all the candidates if anybody withdraws before we even start screening the application.
Well?
I would like to see a screening committee, to be truthful with you.
I didn't hear.
I'd like to see a screening committee first, as opposed to nineteen people in open session. I think it streamlines the, the process. I think the people who are on the committee will be intelligent enough to figure out who the top candidates are. I don't think all of us, every single school committee person, needs to, to do that.
Yeah.
Chairman?
Yeah, I think you can balance it. If you're concerned about the participation of the committee, you can have, say, five finalists instead of two or three. I mean, you know, if you say, all right, you know, we want to be more involved in interviewing, so give us, like, more than three finalists, give it, like, a number we're comfortable with, whatever that would be. Now, you're going to have at least five people coming in for interviews, and the whole committee does the interviews after the screening committee's done it already. So there's the balance you have. And now you just have that efficiency where people can go into executive session and just do that first step of making a pile of no's and getting it down to a, a reasonable number before you start getting into wrangling over all the other details. So I think it would be a good idea to have, to have the screening committee. It doesn't have to be five either, I don't think.
No, I put down six even.
So I'm comfortable with delegating that first task to the screening committee. So I'm seconding what Mr. Schrader's...
Yeah. I've been on, I don't know, five or six screening committee, or actually hiring committees for different positions, and I just found that if someone screens the candidates, and then the, the committee itself then gets to the final, it just seems to move the process much, 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 much quicker. So if you whittle it down to five, to four, to six, whatever that screening committee thinks, then I think it's a little more streamlined when you start going through questions.
I, I would leave it to the screening committee for the number. I mean, I would, me personally, I'd throw five, or six, whatever, five. But if the screening committee says, really, there's just really three, then, then we, then we can decide, do we want to see three, or do we want to see the five? You know, they, they could, I would assume they would right here get kind of top three. Here's four and five, and we can decide if we want to do five or three at that point.
From being through this so many, number of times, I think you should say three to five, or give a range, because it really will depend on...
On the follow-up.
Sure. Also, Robbie, you have to keep in mind, and this is for the whole committee, once you screen and get the applicants and, and pick, say you have five or six applicants, and you got a one or two or three, you know, you're down to that as a committee. Now the committee picks the number one applicant.
Right.
Now we have to negotiate with that applicant for the job, the function of the job, dollars and cents wise. That applicant's level, they'll say, I'm out. Then you go to number two, and number two says, I'm out.
And that does happen.
Right. So you have to be cognizant of the fact, we don't want to just go to two or three, maybe, and say, okay, here's our package. Here's the problem. Now we got to start all over again, if we, if we take too few. Mr. Boys?
Mr. Chairman, so I've been involved, I'm involved right now with one executive director search, for collaborative, been involved with a prior one. We met as the whole committee, but during our meetings, our regularly scheduled times, I assume that a screening committee would probably be more like a lot of our other sort of subcommittees where the...
That's what it is.
The times would vary.
It has to move it along.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, they want to do what's best for the committee, but that would probably eliminate me as far as being able to be accessible and hear, you know, just because of travel time and so forth.
Everything's...
It's devoted.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I'm not totally looking to be out of the picture at all, but I certainly want to make that known, that, you know, I'm not the only one that obviously travels.
Well, my thought process was to be flexible for everybody, but so everybody knows out of the gate, if we go a Monday, a Monday, a Monday, it can fit, you, you can take the schedule if you go to the screening model, screening committee model, because the people are going to have to set. You know, people have schedules. We can't just expect people to, you know, if you start having the screening committee meeting all different hours and changing it around, you've got to really set a schedule and say, this is the schedule. Can you be there? And it's not the worst thing in the world. I mean, if, if you take a couple of parents, and somebody's got a sick child, so we got 10 that night instead of 12, or 11, or whatever. Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah. It's also possible that the screening committee could decide there aren't enough candidates at this point that we want to consider. Like, you start with 17, and if you're all, if you're immediately down to four or three, you probably have to start over again and extend it. So that's another thing. We don't need to get a big deliberation about as a body, but you have the screening committee.
That's right.
So the first question, do we even have enough yet? And then go from there.
I, I've seen them, and, and you do have, I think, a number of qualified candidates in the 19th. I was, I was pleasantly surprised.
So, Chris?
I like the concept of five committee members, but I also like, I think we should limit it. My suggestion would be to limit it to an equal outside involvement as well. So it's kind of equally balanced. You have five from the committee, you have five from the outside. I know that might make it a more challenging process, but it kind of creates a nice equal weight. And so that's just a suggestion. The other thing is, I think, just listening to Robbie's comment and, and Ruth's, we should have a clear-cut expectation of that committee has to have a minimum of three, a maximum of six, or whatever we decide as a group.
A very good idea.
So that's part of the charge of the subcommittee. You need to come up with no less than three, no more than six. It creates a clear set of parameters and expectations to come back for the, the full committees.
I, I completely agree. Then they know where to, they know where to go. You know, I mean, it's, it shows you where to go and how to get there.
Sorry. And one other really important point, I think, both from within the committee, but certainly from outside, I think the critical part is, everyone needs to understand that we're looking for folks that, the full charge is to hire the most qualified candidate. We'll have to build a success criteria, but I think it has to be clear that we're, whoever's going to be part of that committee, there's no, they're not coming with any preconceived notions as to who should or shouldn't be on. It's got to be, whoever's on that subcommittee, this, we're starting with a blank slate. So regardless of, I know this person, I know that, it doesn't matter. My opinion is, that should be a clear-cut expectation of, if you're on the subcommittee, you know, it's not, well, I'm here because I think it should or shouldn't be this person. I think that's a clear-cut ground rule we should establish.
Not even, it's a good ground rule, but it's pretty tough to enforce.
Yes.
Yes, Rick?
If we are going to go with a subcommittee, I think that we should look at what the vetting process is of the folks that aren't members of the school committee that we're going to be having. You know, Kevin, I think is very much natural, but when you are opening it up to the public, you know, a PTO president, you know, you do want people that are involved and care about education, but at the same time, you know, getting to Chris's point, we want to make sure that we're getting folks that have something that can, A, add to the picture, but B, have no preconceived notions. And, you know, sometimes you're better off with someone that doesn't know the district at all, doesn't know education per se, and is there to do some research, and, you know, that knows people, perhaps.
Okay.
And there are a lot of people, as I'm sure we've all had the emails and the phone calls the past week...
Oh, yeah.
...that are interested in being part of the process.
You mean interested in that they'd like to do it, not interested in...
Right. They'd like to do it. I mean, there's quite a few.
I think you get anything, and as Chris said, and someone else echoed it, this is a very, very important job and a very important process that we're going to be going through. And that's why I put it out there. It's going to be like, one night, one, you know, Monday, 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 Monday. If you can't do four or five weeks, you're in trouble with it. Because we're going to be doing it on an aggressive, let's get at it, let's get this done. Because it sounds like, oh, it's real easy. You could do this in three or four weeks. It's going to take longer. Because when you have three candidates, and you start talking money, that could, that could take an extra week or two just in itself. And then if you get to the final three candidates, and they, one of them can't meet, I mean, there's, there's all kinds of things. You get a snow day, you know, it's winter. I mean, we didn't plan on being out two days last week, but yet we were. And if you can't meet, it pushes it off. You know, the, it's hard to set a line, but we need to try to be as aggressive, I think, as possible with, with getting this done.
So you get 19 applicants.
Nineteen.
And if we dwindle it down in this committee, this, the search committee or screening committee, we get to a certain level, we're finding out there's not, you know, not enough acceptable? Besides extending it out, what's the other option? Go out to have somebody go out and look for people to bring in?
We can reopen it again. I mean, we got 19 without going in...
MSS plus school spring.
Right. And the superintendent has looked over some, and has pretty good confidence that we have some very viable candidates.
All right. So we got to pick how many we want on this committee.
Well, we have to determine whether we're going to do a screening. I think the first process I'm looking for is a motion of whether we're going to do a screening committee or not do a screening committee.
Well, I'll make the motion to a screening committee.
Seconded.
Who seconded? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, screening committee it is. Okay. Makeup of the screening committee.
Mr. Hayes? Hi. I just wanted to, I'm Chrissy Pruitt for Village Wayne Whitman. Now that you've decided to do a screening committee, I'm sure it's implied, but I think it would be nice to state that my recommendation is that a school committee member is the chair of the screening committee. So I was happy to hear that you would be a part of that.
Yes.
And that you would actually be the chair of the subcommittee. Just, just so nobody, no, somebody who's not on the school committee doesn't think that they're, they're going to come and chair the committee.
We kind of, well, I may be...
We haven't got that far yet.
Yeah, we haven't got that far, but I kind of assumed that I would facilitate it along just out of the fact of, we have to keep it moving. I've been on a few of them myself, and they get easily derailed. If, you know, sometimes it just happens.
Right.
So that...
And I also just wanted to thank the school committee. After the last meeting, as you know, I was extremely passionate about my, my thoughts and my opinions, and I felt that I was very heard. So I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay. So the makeup of the screening committee, I mean, my, my first thought was, you've got to stand your quorum, so it's got to be five or less school committee members. Five could be myself, so you might as well say four or less.
We got to take you out of the equation.
I'll just step right out of the equation because...
So two from Whitman, two from Hanson.
Right. Two from Whitman, two from Hanson. Now you could always make it three, I mean, two, it would be one from each town.
Well, you know I'm volunteering, so...
Well, I'm figuring I'm going to have to get the hat out pretty quick, because I'm figuring we're going to have too many.
So maybe, Bob, why don't we just do a poll of who would be in? Do you want to ask?
Yeah. Who, who wants not to be on the screening committee?
You want to be on.
Not, well, who wants that? Yeah, anybody want to?
So you're wanting an act. Hanson, I think, might be easier than Whitman. So just give me a second. I'll start with Hanson. Do you two want to do it? Do you two want to do it? I'll kindly step aside. I'll kindly step aside.
Okay, so that settles.
Thank you. We're easy. All right, now you guys can fight it out.
Okay. That leaves four and Whitman. And I, and we can only have two, so what's your pleasure?
Well, you know me by default, as I mentioned.
You're not able to, sir.
Unable. Would love to.
Thank you, Mr. Bush.
And as you know, I'm.
Fred, Dan, Bob, and Kevin.
I'll step out.
Now we're down to three.
I'll step out. Just make it Bob and Fred. You want to do it, right, Bob?
Um, I guess, yeah, I'll do it. Okay. Boy, that was way easier than I thought.
I know. Well, you got to have the time, you really got to have time.
All right, I can leave now.
My thought was you're going to have.
That was way easier. I figured that was going to take a lot longer, I was looking for a hat, you know.
So I'll nominate the folks that are Kevin, Kafka, for the WHA rap.
Second that one.
Sure.
Yeah, I know, so. All right, run the bus over here. For a building principal, I want to run the bus right over Bill Trantor.
So, Mr. Chairman, I guess, all due respect, should we come up with, should, can we, should we agree on a number? Or do you want to just go with, we're going to take everyone that's interested, or do we want to come up with a number?
I'd like to set the number.
No, you're right, Chris. That's where I was going.
Yeah, no, you're right.
You were a little ahead of the curve, probably.
He just wants.
I'm just keeping it moving along.
Yeah, we got good momentum going.
You want to keep moving, I'm keeping it rolling here.
We have six right now. So the question is, I would.
I'd like to see it five and five.
Yeah, five and five, okay.
Anybody have a different number?
I would have a concern, and don't get me wrong, Bill's a great guy. He's also middle school, and perhaps having someone from an elementary level as well, even if we had, you know, they have two principals.
But, okay, but let's get to the number first. I agree, and then we'll talk about that.
I agree with five and five.
Five and five?
Five and five.
Five and five is going to put you, I'd love to agree with you five and five, but I'd rather see you say five and.
Six.
All right, and six. And here's.
Well, yeah, I think I know where you're going.
That's fine.
You could do the one, like Kevin's position, the two parents, two principals, but you also, like you said, I forgot about, SPED should be really considered as a separate thing, so that'd be six and five.
Right.
So.
That was just my thought, yeah.
Odd numbers do make it easier for voting purposes.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So does anybody have any other numbers they'd like to throw out there?
Well, let's, before we, before we get to that, I was thinking if we took, I made so many notes, I can't even find my own note, one administrator, being, i.e., a principal.
Or do, or. Do one from elementary and one from middle.
You could do a Whitman elementary and a.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's going to put you at.
No, just keep going.
Is this two principals, is that what you're saying?
A special education person.
Now, Kyle, do you have a president of your SPED pack?
We do, yep. So Tina Stidstone is currently serving in that position, she's a parent.
She's a parent, so that kind of kills two birds with one stone, maybe.
What's her name?
Tina Stidstone, she's a parent of a Indian head child.
That's nine.
Okay.
And then it would be two other parents.
One person each from the PTO.
So two.
That's eleven. And high school ed foundation, that's a dozen.
Well, yeah, but would you, if you have Indian head, with SPED, did they get involved in any of the other portion of the PTO? Or are they just pretty much?
I'm missing a question.
The parent that you just mentioned for SPED.
I mentioned the school only so you'd know what town they're from, in case you wanted to pick a parent from the other town, but.
Right, but are they involved in the PTO as well, or is it just specifically SPED that?
As far as I know, it's special ed.
Okay.
Does the school count, what about the school count?
Bob and I talked about that earlier.
Teacher? Teacher?
So Kevin kind of represents all the teachers.
Yep.
I think as long as you have kind of the three levels there as far as elementary, high school, and middle, you know, with some capacity.
Yep.
And perhaps the parent representative who could wear, you know, multiple hats, maybe some involved with the SPED program.
You could do that.
As far as other stakeholders, I'm not sure.
And SPED being one of that, that takes care of the five, yeah, six and nine.
Okay, so right now, for five, six, seven. So you're thinking two principals, is that what you're thinking?
Elementary and middle.
Correct. Because I had a ball on Kia as a principal from an elementary school.
From what town?
It shouldn't make a difference.
Shouldn't make a difference.
Should make a difference, elementary and middle.
Who's he, who do you have from?
Karen Downey.
Karen and Bill?
So she's one of the administrators.
Hanson resident as well, so.
Oh, there you go.
She had, unless she's changed her mind, I doubt it. Were you thinking two principals?
You have, where are you up to?
Yeah, Bill, if you go with Bill Trantor Middle School and you go with Karen Downey Elementary, that'll take care of the two principals.
That's acceptable.
You think Bill will do it?
Oh, yeah, Bill will do it. Do whatever.
He doesn't have a choice.
That's right.
I've got eight.
And Kevin being the representative for the PTA, and then, yeah, Bill and Karen, who the other? You had somebody PTO for SPED? So where would we be getting the other one?
We had PTOs.
I had it down as some representative, yeah, we hadn't specified that yet.
Yeah, we haven't got that far yet.
So the slots I have here are one for SPED, and then there would be two, I don't know if those were parent positions or what the, what, eleven, I know one was parent, and then we added.
We had, we were talking about PTO presidents that were already involved, maybe.
That's, that's for the parent slot.
Or Whitman, Hanson Education Foundation. You know, this is just stuff up in the air, guys, speak up. I'm just trying to give you a place to go.
How about two, we have some parents here that are also, I think, are teachers and obviously show quite a bit of interest. I mean, I could volunteer two right off the bat that I know have kids younger, but obviously care enough to be here. I would like to see those two.
Which two?
I think Jill Kane.
Jill Kane and Sarah DeSantis.
Sarah DeSantis.
Okay, as.
One thing is, I would like to see a parent who's not an employee.
An employee.
I think you're going to, yeah, I think you can cover that with PTO or whatever.
I don't think everybody should be an employee.
But PTO would cover it.
Fine.
That's just a thought.
Yeah.
Okay, well, here's, here's a thought. And again, this is why we're discussing this, okay? It has just come to my attention that Karen and Jill are both previous special education people, so they may be able to cover that special education person.
Yeah.
That takes those two on and eliminates the special education, because I believe that we have it covered with these two. Are you two willing?
That's why I'm here, yeah. You're currently in special education, in my, four, ten years, I'm sorry, last year, I was previous. I teach, I'm a special education, so.
I sort of just told him that.
Yeah, so it's like that. Cover a lot of bases.
And you both, and you both live within the district as well.
We have children in the district.
So there's a parent.
A lot invested.
Yeah.
Money, what's best for our kids, our town, all of that.
I'm good with it. Everybody else okay with it?
Yes.
Everybody?
Yep.
You okay with it?
So so far, we, what do you, can you go through who you have definitively on the list?
Jill and Sarah, right?
Bill, Karen, and Kevin.
Eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, I think.
Okay, so we have five school committee members. Kevin Kafka is six. Karen Downey and Bill Trantor is eight. Jill and Sarah are ten.
We need one more.
One more.
Okay?
Who do we have for PTO?
I got contacted by the Hanson PTO president, Angela Green.
Yeah, she's very active.
And she said she would be more than willing, she's a parent, she doesn't work for the district.
What's her name?
Angela Green.
Yes.
She was trying to try to be here tonight, she had hockey tonight, but I think she's going to try. She said she would, she would, yes.
Come up, come up.
Thank you.
I would just recommend that while PTOs are extremely important, and gosh, at the Conley, they raise super enormous amount of money, school councils are extremely important as well as they develop school improvement plans. So they may have some more knowledge of some of the content that, and expectations that the schools have. So I wouldn't just limit it to PTO people if you're thinking, but also thinking about maybe some active school council member, parents as well, just recommendation.
Thank you. Kevin?
Not to keep adding to the committee there, but it may make sense also to include your student rep or student advisory rep, or bring out student, fold the student into this process.
Kind of cool.
Or somebody from student council or something like that, maybe.
They can get to all the meetings.
Yeah, that may be a lot to ask student.
Concern, yeah.
Certainly.
We've had students before, and it's worked out pretty well.
I would consider.
They can't always come, but, but, you know, that's okay, they can even.
Perhaps we could consider them as a non-voting member.
Non-voting member.
Right, they can participate in the discussion.
I think a student council member, just for the experience of a student getting it, I think is a fabulous. We had one on the search committee that I was on previous, Ruth, and we picked you, we had student council members.
Yeah, and we've had them for others, too.
I think it's great experience to, to make, so you're talking about a non-voting member? Somebody that can come and enjoy the experience?
Or even participate in the discussion at times, right?
Okay, so now we're down to the, kind of like, like the end of it, is it PTO or is it, you know, do you want to juggle it? What would you, what's your pleasure? I think it's been so far so good.
We could check with principals in terms of school council members, because we had talked about that before.
That or, or PTO, I would feel comfortable by having the principals is going to give us a lot of, just a lot of input and a lot of support as far as curriculum and what directions and our pillars are.
I'm also offering to be on it, I know you may not, I'm okay with rejection, it's okay. But I'm not able to be on a PTO because of what I'm, what I currently am doing, when the times that they meet, it's during my work hours, or I often have meetings. But I am more than willing to be on the committee as a Whitman parent, just throwing that out there.
Share the wealth of knowledge in her background.
Okay. So, so we're talking about, we're at five, six.
For ten.
We're twelve.
Eight, ten.
Just a question on.
Yeah, the student council member can sit in and discuss voting members, so we're okay.
Both town, we have a person from each town as a parent here, or?
They're Whitman, Hanson.
Whitman and Hanson.
Yes.
Sarah, you're in Hanson, right?
Whitman.
I think she'll.
Hanson. That works so good.
She'll kill a couple of birds there.
How about if we talk about school council, PTO, and we leave that up to.
The principals.
The superintendent to talk to the principals and see what we get out of that.
Okay.
Does the committee, okay with that? That's going to leave the last two.
Last.
Two or one?
One.
One.
One and eleven.
We're only doing eleven. We're only doing eleven.
What do you got? You have five, six, eight, ten. Oh, I'm thinking the student council. Okay, so we need one more.
So I will talk, I'll see them tomorrow.
Okay. Is that?
Is that because you have Angela Green already voted in?
No.
No.
I would suggest that you have a parent from both towns.
Yes.
We do.
We do. One, two.
We have employees from both towns, I understand they play both roles, but I would suggest.
Are they, yeah, are they employees?
Yeah.
Because employees, you got to look at it this way, employees are going to be hiring their boss, that's kind of unusual, looking through that, that's, you might want.
Well, they're screening.
Well, I mean, screening, but they can be going through to somebody. I get that.
Do you want to jump to thirteen?
We can.
Ruth's giving me the evil eye, never mind.
No, as long as, I mean, your interview's going to be two hours long.
Hey, I'm not on it, so it's okay with me.
Keep putting people on.
Oh, Brian, believe me, we're funny with the new position, don't go there.
I know.
I just, I just want to clarify, I think the purpose of this last spot, and depending on the makeup of the towns, it might have to be two, but the purpose of this spot is a parent. Right, that, I just want to be clear, that's what we're talking about, right? That, that this last spot we're trying to fill should be somebody who's there just for their kids, like, just a parent's voice.
Does not work for the district.
Yeah, who doesn't, who's not an employee, not, not in the building so much, but from sort of a, just a parent's view from, kids, I pick them up, they, and, you know, what do they expect from the school district?
Yeah, so.
That's who we're looking for.
So I would, I would also suggest you do have some committee members that are parents that are not working for the district as well.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that either.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at one. There's a few of us that have parent roles as well that are not going to be influenced by our employer.
Exactly, and keep in mind, this is a screening committee. They're going to bring the recommendation to the.
And they very well could come to school committee, and we don't like any of them. It's all over, so there's a whole bunch of stuff that could happen.
Exactly.
I don't, I don't foresee that happening.
No.
Don't get me wrong.
Do you want me to get you one?
Well, as, as for another parent.
I think, I think I'd rather see, and I don't think I've ever said this before, but I think I'd rather see the committee have a, have two than one more, an even number.
That's fine.
Yeah, well, just if you're going to have a parent from one, you should have one.
Yeah, you got to have one from each town.
Does anybody have a problem with Chrissy Pruitt being on the search team then? We need a parent, that's a parent.
Well, you got to determine if you want to go school council, PTO, both, I mean, I don't think anybody has that, that issue.
At this point, in the formation of our committee, I would rather see a parent that has a parental interest than somebody that has, quote unquote, that's in the business, so to speak.
Chrissy has children coming through the school system, so she has a parent.
I understand that, but it's also someone that's in the business.
That makes her knowledgeable.
Okay.
Throwing that out there, that's.
Yep.
Can the superintendent just find two parents and we'll be done with that, right?
Well, that's kind of where we're headed.
I was going to see the principals tomorrow to see if they had school council members who they believed would be viable folks to sit on.
And that's, that's.
Yeah, I'll do that.
I want everybody to be in agreement, I don't want to roll this thing through. I want everybody to be in agreement, so there's no.
Let me know what I find out.
No issue at a later date, because this is a very important thing we're doing.
Because I only put that up because we have a volunteer, and that's what I'm saying, instead of.
We have, there's a, there's a ton of volunteers.
Ton of volunteers, but they're here tonight volunteering.
I think, I would just defer to members of the screening committee on, on the particular of specifically who should fill the role, I just, I'm, I'm comfortable just identifying what we're looking for here as a parent, what we're looking for here as a parent, and you guys go from there and figure out who that should be. 'Cause I mean, there's a pretty large pool of potential names we could be throwing around here right now for time of parents from both towns. I think, uh, like, I'm comfortable with leaving the actual naming of the individuals to the, either the search committee or, or the chair, or however that needs to happen.
That's still kind of a broad statement. So you're making a motion?
No, I'm sa, I'm saying that, I mean.
Bob wants a motion.
I'm, what I'm trying to preclude is a series of motions nominating this person, this person, this person, this person at this meeting right now. I'm just trying to.
I understand. Just fill the, fill the spots.
Do you need a motion?
Hmm, no, I don't think so. No. You've been doing recommendations.
Chair Hayes, I just have a quick question. Does this mean that Angela Green is not definitely on yet, right? You're gonna find.
That's correct. It's still speculation.
Okay, thank you.
The thing is, I don't wanna, I wanna settle this this evening, 'cause I don't wanna, we're, we're gonna get started next Monday night.
Well, no, Monday night's Martin Luther King.
We're not gonna get started.
I had, sooner or later, I was gonna tell you that.
Everyone's off.
Next week, we're gonna start.
Yeah, it won't be Monday night.
That's right.
But there probably will be some Monday nights.
Or Tuesday nights.
Tuesday night, yeah, you're gonna be off.
I'm sorry.
It's Tuesday. I know. You want?
I just wanna point out that, um.
Listen up.
There are many, and Bob and I have spoken at length about this, especially his last meeting until eleven o'clock at night. Thank you for your ear, by the way. There are many parents that want to be involved but can't be. Not for any other reason except potentially their work schedules. So those, I, I used to, when I was a principal, I had a core group of parents that were always there because they could be. It's not that the others didn't want to be. So just by pointing out the PTO, or I said, school council people, it's not that other people, if people have reached out to, and I'm, like I said, I'm fine. I get your point that I'm in the business. I might know, I might know candidates. I understand that. That's, I'm not advocating for myself. I'm advocating for other people that are out there that could care about this process, and this might be another way, a, a, a way to get them involved when they aren't able to get involved in other ways. And so I just wanted to, to throw that out there to you, that oftentimes, some of our families, like I had mentioned before, um, you know, I'm here representing, you know, ten of my friends because they can't be here. You know, one is a nurse, she's working nights. Another, you know, but, but could, knowing the schedule in advance, potentially change her schedule, you know? So, so those are the things. I just want you to keep in mind as a school committee, that not ju, because a parent is there at the school, doesn't mean that the other parents don't want to be involved. So I just wanted to.
I understand.
Yeah.
I think, but, I, I just think it's important to ask the principals. They may find someone who's not on the school council, or they might find someone who's not involved in the PTOs. That would be interesting. So I think that's our best source, is to go to them and say, who do you think in your school would be appropriate for this committee?
Yeah, I'm meeting with them tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that would be the easiest way to solve.
One from here to one from.
That makes perfect sense.
Okay. Are we okay with leaving it like that?
Yes.
And it's all, no, I'm gonna, I'm only gonna tell you the downside of that, and I hate to be the down, Debbie Downer of this group, but there is a downside. I was on a committee in this district where, I won't say how they got volunteered, but they got volunteered and the person, one hundred and fifty percent came forward for one candidate, one candidate only, and that was it, and didn't wanna hear anything else, and when that candidate didn't get back, was ugly. So, that's what you could get on the other side.
But the screening committee will.
Right. The screening committee has got that whole opportunity. That's why we, that's why I'm saying, twelve's not bad, thirteen's not bad, fourteen's not bad, it's a screening committee.
Yep.
It's gonna take a few more minutes to decide in every meeting who it is. I mean, you got twelve, you got fourteen. That's kinda what I was advocating, why we were at ten or eleven. I'm not opposed to a couple more. It's just my only two cents.
I'm gonna throw something out of the box here as far as.
Go ahead, Bob.
How many people are gonna have twelve?
Right now, we have twelve. We'll have twelve.
All right. Who's gonna throw this out? I don't care either way, the other, but if we have twelve people, let's say we have eight questions. And we just rotate who's gonna ask the eight questions, and the rest can be observers. 'Cause my feeling is, I've been on many committees, if you have ten, twelve people asking those questions, we could be there. Not two hours, three hours. But it might be better to streamline the questions and just take turns who's gonna ask them, and the rest of us can just sit back and take notes and.
We've done that.
Yeah.
You can do that.
There are two tiers of questions. So we do the screening committee's questions and then the school committee's questions, because if, you know, five candidates are turned over to you to do the final interviews, those would be different, more in-depth questions.
Yeah, yeah.
So if you're able to pull them, you might say, we want these sort of the next round.
What I would envision is the screening committee meeting, uh, in, no, not Monday. Tuesday night, or whichever, but.
Review the applicants and do their questions.
You know, review the applicants, come up with the pertinent questions, you know, perhaps we just ask parents, you know, email us questions, you know, where people, if people are interested, email us questions so that we can band them about. Yes, we take the top, maybe it's eight, maybe it's ten, maybe it's twelve. Uh, I mean, I've hired hundreds of people over my lifetime. There are certain questions and certain things that I'll always ask. You wanna see what the response is. So that way there, and even if we have one person that speaks, that asks the questions, and then if a person, if a committee member had a follow-up.
Well, part of the problem, Fred, is when you start to waver off of the formula, you're not asking the same pertinent questions to the same, it's not fair to every single person because this person might have not got that question on the follow-up. So you have to ask them the same question.
Well, you ask the same question, but depend upon how someone answers it, I think you may have a follow-up that might be different from one person to the next.
Yeah, it's a little bit, but you gotta more or less stay on track with that, because it, it can get derailed pretty easy. I've been on a few of these and.
You don't wanna have a challenge.
It's, yeah, it's, it, it becomes, I think you'll see, when we have the first meeting, what you're talking about, like the questions. I think the first and the second meeting are gonna take up screening nineteen candidates. To, you're, you're not gonna do all nineteen in one night. Never happened. I don't think. Yeah, and it's, and we'll send, as soon as we figure out who the whole committee is, we'll send out the que, the, um, you know, applications to you so you can pre-read.
You can read them.
And go through, you know, come figure out what it is to streamline the process. So, okay, everybody's good with Ruth?
I'm assuming that each person will rate their, rate their own candidates, and then when we meet, discuss, okay, I have so-and-so for number one.
Yeah.
They might be number three by someone else, so at least you can have an idea.
I think, Bob, the first night, the screening committee can probably set the ground rules quickly.
Yeah.
And we'll say, okay, we're gonna rate one to five. We're gonna do this. You know, whatever the committee determines is, is good for their little niche.
Right, but I'm just saying, if we get them in advance, we should have a pretty good idea of who we think our top.
Yeah.
Four or five may be, and then we may get to the meeting and realize that, whoa, we're way off. They should be.
Yeah, well, that's why we'll send everybody, email everybody the applicants, so you can come with a rated.
We may have to be careful with email, but we can have packets, ready?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so I guess the way we've left it, is Ruth's gonna talk to the principals in the morning? She's meeting with them.
Tomorrow morning?
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
And they'll recommend two people, and we'll notify those two and see if they're available? Is that, we're gonna go with it?
Then we'll get a date. We'll let everybody know what's going on.
Is it, are you good with that?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep. Okay. All right. Yes?
I have no idea.
She wants the list of, of the people you've named so far.
Okay. You want me to get on the list?
We'll just give it to her after.
Come after the meeting, and I'll give it to you. I'll write it all down for you. All right?
I'll give it to you.
All right.
Yeah.
Grace.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming. This is a, one of the mo, it's probably the most important job in the district, and it's one of the, the most important things we're going to do as a school committee and as volunteers. I thank everyone that's volunteered. We've, we've, we've all had a ton of people, Mike.
What time Tuesday? What time Tuesday? Or Monday, or what?
We should probably set the first.
Monday's Martin Luther King Day, so that's definitely over.
Do we pick how many you're gonna dwindle it down to? The, no less than and no more than?
I think we can discuss that right now before I entertain a motion to adjourn, but I, I would assume you would wanna try to get five or six candidates. Is the committee comfortable with that? I mean, if we don't come up with five or six, we better start another search committee.
Well, that's what I'm concerned. I just wanna get a finite, so after next week, if we don't have something.
You want five, you want six?
I, I like a minimum of three and a maximum of six.
That's what I.
But I'm open to whatever you guys.
Okay.
I think you need a higher minimum.
I'd like to take a motion.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that they come back with a minimum of three, no more than six candidates.
Somebody second?
Second.
Scotch it.
I'd rather see it a little bit higher than three. Uh, six or seven, that's, that's cool, but I wouldn't wanna limit us to, quote unquote, the minimum of three, and if we only ended up having three, it could, uh, how do you say it, prolong things. You know, make it a little bit more fuzzy once it got to the full committee.
All right, are we, Chris?
So I think just, I think to clarify, you made the motion, but I think to clarify, we're saying that it has to at least be three.
Right.
But it can be up to six, which gives that committee some flexibility.
Right.
So what we're saying is if we make that minimum number higher, then the search may have to be open. So if we say it's gonna be four or five, then that pre-screening or the selection committee is gonna have to go back. If we only come up with three, we're gonna have to open it back up to go get, we can't present them back to the school committee with three. If it's gonna, if we set the minimum at four, it's gonna have to be four or five or whatever. So, you know, whether it's four.
Or the screening committee reaches a little bit higher to give the full committee.
Well, in, in the process of this, Fred, we're going to be having a couple of school committee meetings, so with five of us being on the committee, I would probably come back to the school committee and say, hey, we're having some issues. Let's retake a look at this and give you guys your opinion on the role.
Well, I think, when you go through an interview process, you may know right away, these are the three top people. Right. Or you may know right away, we really don't have any real strong candidates. So, three to six, you wanna go three to six, that's fine, but I would, I wouldn't be a problem if two came forward, if that's what the committee thought were the two strongest candidates. So, um, you're talking three to six as finalists coming to the, they're the finalists.
So the full committee.
But if we come up with two, I mean, I, I think we can make that flexible. I mean, I'm not, I, I, I just have a feeling out of those candidates, when, when you choose your.
Just feeling you guys deserve.
Field for the pre-interview process, you're gonna know probably within the first couple interviews, once you go through, you're almost gonna know who you want, just.
I agree.
'Cause you're either gonna come in with a bunch of.
We knew that.
I think it's a lot complicated.
No, well. You know something, for me, 'cause I'm not gonna be on the screening committee, it's the level of trust. I trust you guys to come back. I think, honestly, there's a saying out there, the cream rises to the top. I think when you start interviewing people, absolutely, you're gonna see who, who your top people are. And so I'm, I've got plenty of trust in the screening committee. You bring, if you, if you come back and say, look, there's really only two viable candidates? There's only two viable candidates. If you come back and say there's five, then we talk to five.
Then I'm, then I'm assuming it'd be up to the committee to decide whether you wanna go forward or interview.
Exactly. Exactly.
Fine.
So the motion is minimum of three, maximum of six?
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion, Chrissy?
Nice, I have a question. At a previous full committee meeting, you, I think it was you, Bob, I apologize if it wasn't, had suggested that the internal candidates are automatically guaranteed interviews. My question is, are those, say there are three internal candidates, and I'm just throwing the number out, does that automatically make them three of the six, or three of the three that can pass on to the school committee?
I guess the thought process on that was, and it was Bob that suggested that.
Sorry.
I think it was Bob.
Well, I, I think. We would interview as, if the internal candidates would get an interview automatically by the screening committee.
Yes.
Yes. As.
Yeah.
As a courtesy, the screening committee is going to interview internal candidates, no matter who they are.
Doesn't mean they're a finalist.
And then if they happen to come to the final, obviously, they're gonna get interviewed again. But Bob had brought that up, and I thought about that and said, I think that's, I mean, does everybody think that's great?
Professional person.
You know, it's, I mean, these people work internally, I think it's.
Like to hear from our people.
Yeah, exactly. I couldn't agree more, yeah. They're gonna get an interview minimal from the screening committee.
Just doesn't mean they're a finalist. That's.
No.
That's up to the.
Yeah, they may not be a finalist, they may be one and two.
Yeah. Right.
We don't know. We're speculating at best.
It's a two for five.
Kev?
Yeah, I, I don't think, it doesn't have to be a, a hard rule about what the committee has to come up with for a number. I just don't wanna get hung up on making it an absolute rule.
No.
Uh, but I do, I, I would like to express that. I'd be more comfortable with more than three, just for two reasons. One is that this is supposed to be somewhat transparent, this process. So what you're, if the vast majority of everything happens in executive session, then at the very end, we have two people go on an interview for a night. It, it doesn't seem as transparent a process to me as if we have more than that. So, um, maybe just make it an aspiration to give us more than, you know, not a ton of them, but maybe that three to five is a decent number. That, that's what I'm saying.
We can leave that as a placeholder.
That would be a good thing to see.
And we can always alter the process. Chrissy, you have a question?
I was just gonna say one thing to think about rather than setting a minimum and a maximum is to ask the committee to stack rank the top ten candidates. I assume you want some feedback from the committee about those candidates. I would think as part of that feedback, whether that candidate's viable and worthy, maybe worthy's not the right word, but of an interview would be part of that. And so you could then, as a committee, take a look at that list and decide, based on the feedback and the stat rankings, we're gonna take the top four, five, six, eight. Um, but rather than set the number tonight, you know.
See what you got first.
Saying, hey, we're just gonna, we're just gonna stack our top recommendations. And it's by the feedback that I would think you're expecting might, might be a way to go.
Yeah, that, that's reasonable, but.
Gives you flexibility.
But it does make everything suddenly in open session and everybody is brought in to the fold. So if your purpose of making the screening committee is to narrow it down to just finalists who have to broadcast to the world that they're here to get the job, as soon as that eight or ten come to the committee, now everything has to happen in open session. So that's the balance.
Six, I mean, to talk about.
Chris.
Yeah, six is fine, yeah.
People can't hear you at home. I just got an email. Sorry. They're very interested in what you're saying.
It's up to you.
Yeah, what do we, yeah, I'll withdraw the motion.
And we can always fix it. Who has a second?
Small.
So I'll withdraw.
Are you okay with it, you sure?
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything else to be talked about as far as the superintendent search? I think we've gone over quite a bit in a short amount of time. Again, I wanna thank all volunteers, the people that may be watching that aren't here, that have called on the phone and expressed their opinion. This is a very, very important thing, and everybody should be recognized for everything that they've done. So, having said that, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Go ahead.
One last thing, since we have at least a majority of those that are gonna be, can we set a date for that meeting before we take off? For the first, for the first meeting?
First meeting?
Just to get.
Tuesday, what's today, today's the eighth?
Yeah, Tuesday's the sixteenth.
Fifteen?
Sixteen.
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 Yeah, we're open.
Does Tuesday the sixteenth work for everyone?
What time you thinking, six?
Five o'clock. Six o'clock, five o'clock, what's your pleasure?
I'm good.
You can't do it? What's good for you?
Twenty second, too late?
Yeah. When?
Yeah, can you read twenty second for the next one?
Just one quick question about the school committee meeting. The night of the elections, is that the eighteen? Gotta be quick. Twenty second? Thank you. Okay, I'm good that day.
The secretary, you know, she's in charge, and that's, you know. What'd you say, Kev? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, I was.
Oh, no, sorry, I have the SEI class on Tuesday.
Wednesday work? That's a sixty.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Good.
What time, five?
Yeah.
And then it'll go to Mondays after that, you think?
We don't know that.
Well, we'll sit with the committee, Jill, and whatever, I mean, it doesn't have to be all etched in stone, but if we can get the committee on a certain run, I'd like to get it to be the same night every week, so we can have continuity, people can make plans for it, and just, it's done, you know?
Are we doing the seventeenth, is that right?
The seventeenth of January, at five o'clock, here in the library.
Mondays, I, I, I mean, I prefer Monday after that, Tuesday as well, if that's.
Yeah.
Monday, 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 Monday.
Uh, twenty second I'm around.
Twenty second to Monday.
I just.
No, 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 I'm second after that.
So I think the initial, so how about this, just listen, initial meeting on Wednesday the seventeenth, and then Monday is thereafter? Yes?
Yeah, that works.
Yeah, but I, I think I, I need to interject, because I've been through this like a lot of times, and typically what happens is, we will have a meeting where we organize, we do the questions, we go through the applications, and then we go to the lovely Michelle, and then we say, please set up interviews, and typically, we've done them, sometimes back-to-back days, maybe three one day, three the next day, because if you spread them out too far, you're gonna forget what you said the first time until you see the next one. So typically, what we've seen is, say you'd have a meeting next week where you'd really get your act together, in terms of what you're going to do. And then we'd say to Michelle, these are the people we really think we, screening committee wants to interview, then we're gonna really need to look at trying to have a couple of days, pretty close in time, where you can just go boom, 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 and get it done, and then you have the opportunity to convene and determine what you're gonna get back to the committee. But if we do it, unfortunately, I think, once a week, you're gonna be doing, the reason I told you I was retiring when I did, so you'd have time to do this, but it's not gonna happen if it takes too long. Or I would've told you like in ninety days before, but I didn't do that. So I do think that's how it really works, so.
If we did the twenty second, we've got negotiations on the twenty third.
Yes, but I think a good meeting on Wednesday the seventeenth will set the tone for the entire thing.
Exactly, and we'll set the next meeting.